Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I've cleared the car before the horse. Ms. Harris, will you get the prayer first?
Lord, we're coming for you this afternoon, oh God. Just to wanna thank you, Lord. You've been so good and you've been so kind. Lord, we bless your holy name in this place, oh God. We ask your presence to be here, oh God. Cause you're so sweet, God, and we thank you. Have you kept all of us safe? We thank you for West Memphis, oh God. Thank you for this city, oh God. Continue to bless it, oh God. Continue to cover it with your blood. Continue to fill it with your spirit. Continue, Lord, to save in this city, oh God. Lord, we thank you right now for your loving kindness and your tender mercy, cause you've been so good. Lord, we bless your holy name, oh God. As we go through this council meeting today, oh God. Let your word be made known, oh God. Let your appearance be made known in here, God. Fill this place with your presence. Cover us with your blood, oh God. Lift us with your love, oh God. Bless this council, oh God. As we start to make decisions, oh, for this city, oh God. Bless our mayor as the leader of this city, oh God. Lord, we thank you right now, oh God. And continue to look at the witnesses and bereavement, oh God. Dennis Brewer and Frank Martin. Lord, we thank you, hallelujah. Glory to your name, Jesus. You've been so good to us, oh God. Bless this meeting, oh God. Lift us up, oh God. Encourage each and every one, oh God. Bless us in the name of Jesus, Lord, that we make the right decisions, oh God. In your word, oh God. In Jesus' name I pray.
Let's face the flag, please. A pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll call this meeting to order. Mr. The Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor McClendon?
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson?
Here.
Counselor Kat?
Here.
Counselor Crum?
Here.
Counselor Harris?
Here.
Counselor Holt?
Here.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Here.
Counselor Muhammad?
Present.
Counselor Monday?
Here.
Counselor Murray?
Here.
Counselor Pulliam?
Here.
Counselor Willis?
Here.
We have ten out of ten being present. Can I get a motion in second to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
They're approved. Uh, we have no old business today, so we're moved to, uh, our new business, um, Councilman Pulliam?
Make a motion, read R. 1 and R. 2 and 01 by title only.
Also, you add?
Well, we didn't put those on yet.
Okay, okay. Alright, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
I oppose. Also, I would like to add, uh, give a motion in second to add R. 3, the, uh, Farming's, uh, Fee Schedule. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Councilman Pulliam?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to read by title only?
By title only, yeah. That was the way it was.
Second?
Second, sir.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? R. 3, add and title on. So, City Attorney?
A resolution authorizing Tori Perry as city accountant and Todd Peterson as general manager for West Memphis Utilities to co-sign the 2019 financial audit for the city of West Memphis, I'm sorry, for the West Memphis Utilities.
Uh, hearing that, I get a motion in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Clerk, would you give that resolution a number, please?
Yes, sir. That resolution will be 2227.
2227.
Mm-hmm.
Alright. R. 2, City Attorney?
Um, R. 2 is, "The city of West Memphis is essential in support of fair, direct federal emergency support to reopen and rebuild local American economies."
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion about that?
I think that, uh, Mayor, if it's okay, I would like for, uh, the City Attorney, just brief.
Okay.
Just a short brief.
Uh, the Municipal League, uh, which the city is associated with, uh, has asked, uh, probably about, uh, for the last two or three weeks, close to a month, that each city, uh, that is a part of the Municipal League, uh, would pass a resolution that would then be sent off to the congressional leaders in Washington to show that, uh, each city is in support of providing, uh, emergency support to cities to help them reopen and to help the economy. Um, they believe that the more cities that they can have pass these resolutions, the stronger voice they'll have, uh, with the, uh, congressional leadership. And, uh, so, um, that's why it's on the agenda.
Alright. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Ms. City Clerk, will you give that a number?
It will be 2228.
2228. Also, Mr. City Attorney, could you read?
I wanna make, I wanna make them, uh, you said, okay, R. 3. You wanna read R. 3, okay, go ahead.
Alright. R. 3 is a resolution to approve the EMS billing fees for the West Memphis Fire Department.
Alright, the Fire Commission just met and approved that. Uh, can I get a motion in second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing, uh, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passed. Will you give that resolution number as well?
That will be 2229.
That'll be 2229. Alright. 01?
01. Well, I make a motion, we table 01 indefinitely.
Second.
Alright, we got a motion in second to table it. Uh, will you call the roll? Ms. Patricia?
Yes, sir. Counselor Kat?
Is, uh, is this not time for conversation and discussion?
Well, that, there's none in table.
Alright, in table, no, no discussion.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
No.
Counselor Holt?
No.
Counselor Hutchinson?
No.
Counselor Muhammad?
Uh, yes.
Counselor Monday?
Yes.
Counselor Murray?
No.
Counselor Pulliam?
Yes.
Counselor Willis?
Yes.
Five, yes?
The motion to table it fails.
May I call for executive session before we go in? Since we're talking about an employee, I would like to go into executive session before we vote on this ordinance.
Okay. Uh, executive session will be only the city council members and the mayor. You all? First of all, uh, I need to reconvene the meeting. Uh, Ms. Senior Clerk, will you call the roll again?
Yes, sir. Counselor Kat?
Here.
Counselor Crum?
Here.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Holt?
Here.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Here.
Counselor Muhammad?
Present.
Counselor Monday?
Here.
Counselor Murray?
Here.
Counselor Pulliam?
Here.
Counselor Willis?
Here.
Ten out of ten, sir.
Alright, I mean, it's, uh, convening. I'm going to, uh, turn it over to Councilwoman Hutchinson as she get the results of these, uh, the executive session.
Thank you, Mayor McClendon. I'm gonna turn it over to Council Tracy Caddis. He gives us, I think he has more in depth. Uh, we all agree that he do it for us, so I'm gonna go ahead and turn, turn it over to Council Caddis. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
As everyone is aware, there was, um, a little bit of confusion before the initial vote today when definitely took place. Uh, because this did involve an employee of the city. Is legally, based on Municipal League information, which direction are we supposed to go? Once you have a vote on this ordinance here, I think you'll have a very clear indication of what that decision was in executive session.
That's it.
Again, we need to read the ordinance out, vote it up, vote it down, and that will clearly indicate what was discussed in the executive session.
Alright. Mr. Attorney, will you read 01?
An ordinance permitting Senior Deputy Clerk Patricia Lane to hold the appointed city clerk position with the city of West Memphis.
May I suspend the rules and place it on second reading?
So moved.
So ahead.
Alright. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Poll, City Attorney?
An ordinance permitting Senior Deputy Clerk Patricia Lane to hold the appointed city clerk position with the city of West Memphis.
May I follow, then, get a motion in second to suspend the rules and place it on the third reading?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance permitting Senior Deputy Clerk Patricia Lane to hold the appointed city clerk position with the city of West Memphis.
Alright, hearing the mayor for the third time, can I get a motion in second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in second to approve. Are there any further discussion?
Yes, I would like to, I think, like, one of the things that we talked about in this, uh, session, uh, Counselor Caddis already explained some of the things. But before I vote, I would like to say that my vote is, is my personal. I think Ms. Lane has done and will always do a wonderful job. In, in my own mind and heart, she is a, a city clerk. But as far as being the Municipal League's recommendation, I'm going to do what I'm doing because of the recommendation. And because strongly recommended, and because we had a dual role once before in the senior West Memphis. And now that person is no longer here, and we don't, we were in a bind for not having the clerk and the finance, not the clerk, but the treasurer and the finance, not the chair, we had neither one of them because of that dual role. So I just want to say that my vote is my personal. My vote is basically getting political.
Any further discussion? Uh, I, I just wanna end, I wanna say it publicly. Uh, Patricia Lane works for this office and works hard. She's been doing this role for several years, and I definitely support her. As you all passed it, but you all had to make that decision. I stand beside and support her on that, and I just want to say it personally. Alright, uh, will you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Counselor Kat?
No.
Counselor Crum?
No.
Counselor Harris?
No.
Counselor Holt?
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson?
No.
Counselor Muhammad?
No.
Counselor Monday?
Yes.
Counselor Murray?
Yes.
Counselor Pulliam?
No.
Counselor Willis?
No.
And that was happened.
Alright. The motion fails.
I would like to say before we go into the meeting, we did also discuss that we will not consider putting any other person in this role because it's so close to the election. This, this lane, but we need to serve, as she has been serving for the past few months. And we're still, we're not bringing anybody else.
It was just a promotion to see.
We were not, we were not bringing anybody else, and she just stated, you know, how we can't bring anyone else. Our attempt to a problem.
Alright. I'm gonna go to, uh, permission request. Uh, permission to approve a bid of $55,000 submitted by the city of West Memphis to Crittenden County for the acquisition of approximately 7.25 acres of land underlying the Friday Graham Railroad. I'm gonna ask Philip Soul if you just come forward and give a brief explanation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, if you all recall, last meetings, last council meeting, uh, you all, uh, granted permission for the mayor to submit a bid for property that, uh, is titled, uh, under Crittenden County for the Friday Graham Railroad. Uh, it's become necessary for us to obtain clear title to all the property associated with the railroad. Uh, therefore, we submitted this bid of $55,000, uh, which is, uh, less than the appraised value of the property, which was $72,600. The Port Authority yesterday met and approved, uh, payment from the Port Authority Fund, uh, to, uh, cover the cost for, uh, acquiring this property. And we're asking your permission to approve, uh, this bid that was submitted.
Any further discussion? Can I get a motion in second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
It passes. Um, Ms. Councilwoman Hutchinson, if you wanna do something to your disbursement?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm asking for permission to change my initial, uh, request for $1,000 to go to the West Memphis School District, I'm sorry, yeah, West Memphis School District. Initially, that's what I asked the council. I'm changing that request to give $1,000 to New St. Paul Church, uh, for the very same reason, but we'll just, we're gonna do it through the church. So I'm asking council for permission to give $1,000 to New St. Paul here in West Memphis, Arkansas.
Can I get a motion in second to approve?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, was there anyone else that needed to add anything for his money wise?
Yes, I'd like, how much is the full amount?
Uh, the full amount, if you have, um, 1884.
Okay, I'd like to donate 1884 to, uh, Wonder City Boys Club.
I would like to, uh, commit my balance to Melanie's.
Okay. Is that New St. Paul?
Yes.
Balance, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Let me ask, is any of y'all the council member like to give that disbursement? Hearing none, I'll ask you all for motion in second to approve the two additional ones.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so $1,000, Ms. Hutchinson to New St. Paul, 1884 to the Wonder City Boys Club from Councilman, uh, Monday, and, uh, Councilman Murray, the balance appears to?
I think it's like 384.
Okay, we'll get the balance. The balance to New St. Paul as well. Alright. I had no presentations, uh, and announcements.
I get one I'd like to make. I don't know, well, I don't know exactly what time that it was sent, but I sent out an email, might've been last night or early this morning, to all of y'all. Matter of fact, I forwarded from the National League of Cities. And I wish you all just go in there and take a look around, uh, and see, they have a lot of good opportunities out there we might be able to piggyback on. So I just wanted everyone to go in and just take a look. That's something that we, uh, the, um, we're through the Municipal League and everything that, that we're privileged to. But if you go out there and take a look, it a lot of, it's, it's a lot of information out there. And I can say, I just sent that link and just asked you all to go in and just go through it and take a look, because it's a lot of good information out there all the time. Especially, Mayor, you know, we're talking about revitalizing.
Yeah.
It's, it's so much information out there. Matter of fact, they have consultants that would help us with some things. All we gotta do, just reach out and ask. And for Mr. Todd, get out here, I want him to come up anyway.
Alright. Mr. Todd? Come on, come on, no, the councilman was trying to catch you. What you got?
He was crawling.
Yeah. Go on, give us.
Yeah, come on. I, I just, what, what I was needing you to do, if you don't mind, can you just give us an update as to what's going on with the different, uh, you know?
Projects.
Yeah, projects that you got going on.
Yeah, I know, all my, my projects, my sinkholes.
Yeah.
I would call them. Uh, West Walnut has been completed. The, the sewer line has been completed and is flowing through the new sewer line.
Okay.
We have not plugged the old sewer line that we're going to abandon yet, and we have not finished the road as far as getting the road and the sidewalks and the driveways back like they're supposed to. The crews are over at, um, Woods and Jefferson. They have tied in to the manhole on Woods and have moved to the west and also put the new manhole in, uh, right in front of the pump station. And I've now started laying the 24-inch pipe going west. They've laid about 84 feet of pipe going west. Hopefully, we'll be getting to some good pipe around 100 foot and be able to set a, a manhole right there and tie in. Once they do that, then we're going to move on to the other two areas that we have at Winchell and Madison between 9th and 10th. Those are the two we have. So hopefully, we're hoping that we'll be finishing up the, uh, Woods and Jefferson, hopefully within two weeks.
If, if you don't mind, especially the one right there, 10th and Madison, could you kinda have your men to kinda keep an eye on it? Cause they've been, they've been responding, but, you know?
Okay.
What's happening is, for some reason, they've been, it's been feedback into that line, so you know?
Okay. I'll follow back up with, uh, my foreman, Michael Lamb, just to make sure to?
Well, they've been responding, but I just?
He has, okay, good. Mike's a great foreman. I mean, he, he's one of our long-term employees that, I, I know the mayor recognized him as one of the guys we recognized early. He's been a long-term employee of this city, and I can tell you, he's a valuable asset to this city for the way he runs that crews and does what he does. So, uh, again, I, we'll be hopefully over there within two weeks. And, and we're doing some other work, just to also let you know, we're bringing in because we're concerned about the rest of Woods going north.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're going to be TVing that, those lines next week and evaluating the condition of those, uh, to see what we might have to do over there. Uh, I, we're going, the sewer system needs a lot of TLC right now. We're gonna do what we need to do to make sure we get it in the condition we need to do so it's in a good condition.
That's what I was thinking. Hopefully, that it mean throughout the city itself, we can see some sort of plan with, uh, uh, you know, put together by the utility and, and, and the, uh, public works person, you know?
Right.
The problem is, I mean, it's, it's overwhelming right about now.
Well, I, I've got a plan.
Yeah.
I would like to bring it, remember the last joint meeting we had where I was telling you about it? We've put together our comprehensive plan to the state. The state has approved our comprehensive plan. But bringing you, this group together and, uh, my commission, we've just recently, uh, those kinda conversations and the dollars we're talking about, I like to have those conversations face to face. And, you know, y'all look me in the eye and I look y'all in the eye, and we start to talk about how we're gonna address those dollars and where they're gonna have to come from and what we can do. Again, I, I think we can do it, and, you know, I, I, we've got that plan. It's just a matter of getting it in front of y'all. My thought process is maybe in the next near future, we can maybe have a meeting at the Civic Center where we have a big area for everybody to sit around and have a joint meeting.
We need to do it in, in the pumping station out there, of course. Pretty much, how, how close are we completing it? You know, the one that we was, where the head fell in? I, I don't, uh?
Main pumping station, four seals you had.
Okay. The, the crew that was over at West Walnut?
Okay.
Okay, they went over to the pumping station or, and are evaluating, uh, what we can do with the pipe. As y'all know, we did, um, I mean, Mr. Cat came over there and I showed him, we pretty much lost the slab.
Yeah.
We pulled the building off the top and we built a temporary building around my controls equipment. What we're looking at doing is actually taking those controls equipment, because we are having, continually having a lot of settlement in that area and putting those on top of the main structure. For some reason, the main structure is not moving at all. But that area to the side where the, the electrical controls equipment was located, that dirt is actually, we think, washing out and going into the spillway area. And instead of having to dig that completely out, we're looking at a alternate plan of putting those things over on top. And then we, before we do, we, we will be coming to y'all because that is not utility money. That is, that, that's paid for through, uh, I think Drainage and Public Works, which is, and it's over. So before we start any more spending of that money, we will be coming to y'all to get that approval.
That was gonna be my next question, but you already answered, because I know we had to take, you know, a, a, a large sum, you know, I'm telling you, from Public Works, which, you know?
Right.
So I'm just, that, that's another reason why I'm asking if we could come up with something so we could see where we're going with it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We, we will be moving that in coming forward there. The design to move the controls, but we haven't fully given you a cost estimate on, or, we haven't got a cost estimate to fix the piping where it is separated yet. It kinda fell back a little bit just because going into the summer months, the main, you know, our main concerns was when we were in that wet period, being able to run the station. We got through the wet period. We are now in a dry period now for several months, but we will be getting that to you very shortly. Okay?
Mr. Peterson, before you leave the mic?
Tracy's back there.
Since you got the mic, I've got a question. And, Mayor, it may be a question we need to discuss at the Public Works meeting next, uh, Tuesday. But I was wondering where we were. We had at one time been talking about giving the motor pool our, uh, over on, um, Jefferson or Jackson some assistance in their maintenance projects from utility.
Mm-hmm.
And I didn't know exactly where that conversation went. I mean, we talked about it, but?
Well, I, I can tell you, the mayor did, had approached me, I, I guess a month ago or so, two months ago now? I, I lose, I've lost track of time with everything else going on, so I apologize. The mayor did approach me, and we have our staff over there, Sean, Ryan, and Ron, who is my two mechanics, has been assisting the city shop in performing duties over there. If they need assistance and the knowledge that we have over there, we've already been going over there and helping them with assistance. My guys are not overseeing the, the city shop, but they are, we are allowing them to work on equipment and go over there. Actually, if the equipment is okay, they go ahead and bring it on over to our area Actually, if the equipment is okay, they go ahead and bring it on over to our area and we work on it from there. We've worked on several, you know, vehicles. So, they are assisting and I think the mayor would agree with that. And as far as pass that, we haven't had any other discussions. I think that would be a discussion that we'd have to do administratively.
So, a month's time, you really had had an opportunity to assess, to see if this was helping or not helping or?
Again, I don't know if, that would be a question more for their foremen. My guys, they do what they can to help out over there and fix it. Have you had any feedback, mayor? Is it helping the public works?
Sean and Ron has been incredible. And when I do my analysis, I think it'll address a lot of the work council.
I can tell you, those are two good guys that are very, you know, conscientious about their work and, you know, that they just want to make it right and, you know.
Well, I'm just curious.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
I'm going to give a quick announcement, overview of the city, then I'll go back up to committee reports and go to police and then Ms. Harris. First of all, I want to say, I want to publicly acknowledge the city of West Memphis and our workers. This council, we have done a fantastic job during this situation. Utility department has agreed to another five-year deal, keeping us for the next five years. The second lowest utility company in the whole state of Arkansas. As well, if we got some of the lowest water rates than you can find anywhere. Our fire departments continue to work, they're keeping us at a one fire rating. As well as our EMS have made record calls this year so far. As well as our police department. I do want to address just something that may seem awful, I'm just going to go directly to the numbers. This year alone, in West Memphis, up to six months, there's been only two murders. I can name as many men in the past that have died that I knew personally, and it's been far more than two. I hope not to get one more this year. So, my numbers has never been deceiving. My numbers have been what the police department gave me. And right now, currently, in West Memphis, we're going to take four years out, a year out from January 1st to July 1st. We have had two murders in West Memphis and that is incredible and amazingly good. They need, and our police department need to be commended for that. In this year, just six months, even though we got six more months to go, there's been only six reported batteries in the first degree. You all don't really just hear about people shooting up people's houses like they were doing a couple of years before I came into this office. You got nineteen terroristic acts, which in this city, you haven't heard, that's unheard of. Thirty-four aggravated assaults from January 1st to July 1st. And you had seventy-seven, I mean, I'm sorry, you had seventeen robberies compared to what so many different things was happening. So, I want to commend this police department for the work that they are doing, the community outreach that they are doing, community-oriented policing, as well as our balance suppression unit. They are doing a wonderful job in what they doing. And regardless of anybody, we not going to take that from our employer because it's them and the people of West Memphis that are working together to make sure West Memphis is a safer city and that need to be commended. And I want to, I tell anybody, I'm the only mayor in history that ever had to deal with COVID-19, a pandemic that is putting this whole country and nation down. And when we as a city council have to look at the things that we have to do to address our departments and make them better, as me as a mayor have to deal with city employers that are affected by this. Now, let me say this, yes, are we having our issues in the sanitation department? Yes, I'd be the first one to say we are. And I apologize to the people of West Memphis and I know they don't want to hear no excuses. But there's no other mayor from Z H Brad to William Johnson have ever had to deal with this pandemic ever in our nation that you know, and I'm going to do a better job of communicating with you council, but did you know that eight of our employees at the sanitation department is out with the COVID-19? Whether it's testing or whatever, maybe twelve of our street department. So, you got twenty individuals at that department that's gone. You got eight out of eleven employees with our park department is out because of COVID-19. It's not that they don't want to do the job. Don't you know that we even have one administrator in our utility department that's out because of COVID-19? And we had people affected from fire and other police and other departments that have gathered, got better, returned back to work. So, I need the people of West Memphis to understand that, yes, do we must do a better job? Are we going to do the better job? Is the council and this administration going to work together to make sure that we get our trucks fixed and repaired? Yes, we doing all of that, but we going through something. This administration and this council is going through something we never have went through in history before. And I ask to give us a little patience to the people, to give us a little patience. We going to get on top of this trash. We have placed bins in every ward so that you can displace your trash as you can bring it. We down to two trucks. Some of the trucks have been down, but that's not an excuse because that's administrative thing that I have to fix. And I take full responsibility for that part. But when you got trucks up like we do now, but the people that's supposed to operate the vehicles is out because of this pandemic, what am I to do? I talked to councilman Crum and men of all of you all and you all giving me ideas that I'm trying to implement so that we can get our city to what we need to be. So, trust me, it affects us well because everyone that's on this council and me as a mayor, we all live right here in West Memphis. So, we dealing with the same issues that all of you are. We paying the same rate that all of you are paying. So, I just hope that you all just kind of understand because it's your family at home dealing with these, this pandemic. Our family members here are dealing with it as well. Labs are backed up, but one good note I do want to bring, I want to bring Steve Jones up to the mic. He's been addressing an issue for our city with this COVID. Creighton County is in a spike right now. Yes, today we got seven hundred and forty-seven cases here in Creighton County and we are spiking. And he's on the call for me every morning and they have provided a new hospital in Memphis so we get sick, West Memphis and Creighton County can go over there to the hospitals.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Members of the council, thank you for allowing me this opportunity to just do a brief update. As the mayor stated a moment ago, we want to do a better job of keeping you all informed on things that are going on. We, every day we come and we're working on a number of things. And you will probably, you're probably getting calls on some things that we're not aware of and many of them are on our radar and we're working on them. For instance, on this week, an organization here in town, well, specifically the NAACP held a press conference to ask the governor to do some things to make sure that we are covered in this city in the eventuality of another surge. And I got the text at the last minute, actually, I was on the conference call. I have a, I'm the mayor's designee on the Memphis Shelby County COVID Task Force. We meet mornings and we go over procurement, we go over all of the emergency support functions. We talk about where PPE is, any needs, it's the mayors of, it's our mayors or their representatives from all of the cities, from Mayor Strickland's office, Mayor Harris's office, Shelby County Mayor Harris, Horn Lake, Millington, all of the cities surrounding Memphis. If I may back up for just a moment, a few years ago, when I was a part of Governor Bibby's administration, he asked, appointed me to a task force that was impaneled by then Shelby County Mayor A.C. Wardner to figure out how they could get equity and pay at the mayor, how they could get fair rates from the various states for the citizens from Arkansas and Mississippi that would go there and even looking at rebranding. And it is now what we call Region One. And one of the outputs from those meetings is that they, as they always have, will serve any person from Arkansas, any person from Mississippi that goes there, just like they would any person from Shelby County. And that still continues today. What I don't think that some people knew, and I know that they didn't because that was a part of what the press conference was, is what that hospital that was created, that hospital was built in about thirty, forty-five days. It's a four-hundred-bed hospital, it's in the old commercial PO building. And it's there and it's ready, it's not, nobody's in there, there are no patients in there now. All they have to do is turn the key on if the need arises. And I think the last number that we got is that the hospitals in Memphis are at about fifty-one percent right now. So, there's not a need right now to open that hospital up, but it's there. And it's not just for Shelby County and Memphis. Our residents, if they need that COVID hospital, it's there for them, just like, just like Region One is. It goes under the same pay and fee scale that Region One is. Arkansas reimburses Tennessee for servicing our parents, for our patients over there. So, that hospital is there, it is for Creighton County, West Memphis and Creighton County, just like it is for Northern Mississippi and all of Shelby County as well. I'm happy to take any questions, but I did want you all to know because not only did the NAACP have that question, but there have been some other citizens that wondered, why don't we have a hospital over here to take care of COVID patients? And to be clear, Baptist Creighton is servicing patients with COVID. East Arkansas Family Health Center every day is testing. And there are other entities in here that are in this city that are testing and taking care of patients who have COVID. But if it gets bad enough as a result of the surge later on, then they will open up the hospital downtown on Union Avenue. Any questions?
Yes, I have one.
I think Councilman Crum was first and then I'll come back to you.
Mr. Jones, do you know if it's a fact that COVID-19 patients, that the hospitals receive like a bonus or a fifteen-hundred-dollar payment for all the COVID patients they take in?
I'm not aware of that number, that's not something that has come up on our calls, our morning calls. I'm happy to check into that for you and report back to you, Councilman Crum.
My question is, we know it's a spike here in Creighton County, right? And it's a spike all over Arkansas. What is the governor saying about that? Is, they still going back to business as usual? I don't understand it. It's a spike going up, but you're still going back to business as usual? I mean, that don't seem logical to me. We need to, you know, quarantine, we need to stop going out to restaurants and eating and stuff. You know, we need to come together ourselves as a council, you know, we need to wear these masks all the time.
Thank you.
And we need to pass some law over here like it did in Memphis.
That's right.
To where people need to keep, wear your mask when you're out in public, when you go in the store, you have to have your, you should have to have your mask on.
And councilman, I have given directives to the city employers as well as utility department as well to wear masks. If you, if you're working by yourself, of course, you don't have to, but if we all together, you need to have these on. So, our city employers supposedly be doing that tomorrow.
I know that about the city employees and they're doing a good job. I see them with them on, I'm talking about the whole city. I'm talking about the city. We all need to come together. It's just, it's killing people. I know, I went to service Saturday, a loved one, you know, died from COVID. It's, you know, it's a mess. It is, it's a pandemic and we started going back, going back to usual. What kind of sense do that make? Go back to usual, we never, will never get back to usual, will never get back there because of this pandemic right now. And the president, Harley and everything is okay, you don't even have to test. Just, you know, we need to think about our people, ourselves, pass an ordinance to where you have to have your mask on out in public. Thank you, mayor.
Councilman, you may know that mayor has been a part of, I think, four community testing. He's actually advocated for and put money into four community testings here in West Memphis at the schools, at the high school, and then some over at East Arkansas Family Health Center to get people tested. We had an increase yesterday of three, there were three additional positives this morning as opposed, juxtaposed against the day before. But we've, just in the last seven days, we went up thirty-five, I think, one day. So, and right now, the labs are lagging behind. So, I think in the next few days, the numbers will jump again, the labs, we just confirmed before we came out, the labs in Memphis that service all of Memphis metro area, they're behind right now getting results out.
Well, you know, at the first one, I was there, you were there, I was the first one tested. And, and I, you know, I've been trying to keep myself safe, but I'm going to get tested again because I'm around a lot of people. And I don't want to make nobody else sick, you know, and I got.
The test is only good for that day. The test is only good for that day. You can go out later on and get infected, get infected.
That's what I'm talking about.
Councilman Crum?
I was just going to make a comment that getting retested is a good thing to do.
Yes, sir.
But, you know, there are certain things that, wearing a mask, okay, is great for those that want to wear a mask. I choose not to wear a mask sometimes, not all the time, but sometimes. And I think it's left up to the individual whether they need to wear the mask or not. I don't think we need an ordinance that's forcing people to wear a mask, you know? So, that's another opinion I've got. But I had one more idea, but I.
You're getting like me, councilman. Well, while you're thinking about it, Ms. Harris, you have a question?
My thing is.
I'm sorry, councilwoman Harris.
Need to be more strict with letting their customers come in, you know, in the stores and things. They should make sure that they got their mask and they go out that they have to have those on when they come into the business. But they're not enforcing anything. So, you see them walking around in the stores with no mask on, but yet, it's like this lady was in the line, was in chill, was sneezing. You know what I'm saying? They're not enforcing it.
There was a fight in Little Rock yesterday about that, at a restaurant. Yeah.
I got one quick question I want to ask. First of all, I want to commend staff, administration, all that medical peoples, you know, I mean, the great job that they're doing during this pandemic. But at the same time, I have another question. I don't know if the task force is addressed, I know COVID is their main concern at this point in time. But what about this, you know, are they looking down the road at this swine flu that they talking about getting ready to come back on?
It's a good question, that actually has not come up on any of our calls.
The reason I was saying, because I mean.
They have talked about how the flu season will impact, but not specifically.
Well, you know, that's on the rise too, I've been reading some articles on that. I was just wondering because number one, I mean, you know, the city, we're doing a great job of doing the best that we can under the conditions. And I was just wondering, had, you know, since you mentioned the task force, was that on our radar as well?
And just in case you all are curious, on the task force are the mayors or their designees from the towns surrounding Memphis as well as, and the counties, as well as doctors, the head of the health department, the statisticians who are keeping up with all the data for us. They do a full data report, it's a Zoom. They do a full data report that starts internationally and comes down to national numbers. And then we talk about, most of the call has to do with what's going on locally. I'm finished, did you have another question for me, councilman? Okay, any other questions?
Well, you know, I think people need to realize that when you have a mask, it's not necessarily protecting you, it's protecting you.
That's correct.
You know, and that's, but my wife will, if you don't have a mask around her, she's going to move like crazy. You know, I mean, she's not going to be around anybody that's not doing what they should be doing. She would, she kind of literally says, move back.
And if you go into any, several businesses in Memphis now, there's a sign, you must have a mask on the door that you have, must have a mask to enter.
And there's some of them over here doing that too.
Right.
I would like to see us, the county now, they got a good protocol. Have you noticed their protocol? When you go to their courthouse, they're married.
I haven't been over there.
Have you been up there?
Yeah.
Love their protocol.
Well, I'll tell you this and I'll move on to the next thing. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, members of the council.
I wrote a hit song, I wrote a hit song that sold over a million copies. And it says, stay at home. So, when you ain't got to be out, I mean, I'm saying you got to go get food, pay bills, do the necessary things. But with all the motion and no disrespect, stay at home.
That quote would be very popular.
Yeah. I want to go back up to committee reports, police, Mr. Murray.
Yes, sir, we met on June 10th and a meeting was called at 12 noon. The meeting was turned over to Assistant Chief Langston and these are the issues that he discussed. We have one hundred and five overtime hours due to protests with the cost of thirty-three hundred dollars. We have twelve, one hundred and twelve thousand dollars of overtime reimbursed through May. Two opens currently, nine officers have left so far this year, two in FTO currently, three in the academy currently. Then he wanted to request to purchase five patrol units that were approved in two thousand and twenty Capitol Outlay Plan. Motion in second was approved to order the units. Permission to order two vehicles for inspectors, received grant to cover the cost. Motion in second was approved to order units. Permission to equip vehicles that were transferred to the patrol division. Motion in second was approved to equip these vehicles for use as patrol vehicles. Another officer was assigned to aid code enforcement. Record policy is being reviewed for any necessary updates and will be presented at the next commission meeting. We had concerned citizens complaining about loud music on South, North Eighteenth Street, speeding, running stop signs, rich road. The budget report was they were three percent under salaries and benefits, thirteen point seven percent under in supplies and service. That is our report.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Ms. Harris?
Councilwoman Harris, so.
Thank you, mayor. This was brought to me, to my attention, that the Brewer Committee, because they have already got their committee together for the Dennis Brewer Fire Station, to be named Dennis Brewer on the east end of West Memphis. So, we're asking that we'll go on and name this fire station Dennis Brewer, if the council approves it. You know, I have an objection.
Ms. Harris, that came through the fire commission a few days ago.
Right, so I'm bringing it for the council.
And what you'll have to do is do a resolution to get that done.
Okay.
That's being worked on already.
So, y'all working on it, but we have a committee, they have a committee.
It has to come through the city council.
Right.
But the city council will be the one who will have to make the.
Exactly, exactly. I'm just asking, I'm just. Right, right now, I'm just asking for the council to approve the committee.
Oh, I don't know anything about the committee.
Okay, the chairman of that committee will be me. Helen Harrison, the co-chair will be Willis Monday. The secretary will be Melanie Hutcheson. Another member is Mr. Murray. Because he's in voir fai. Pardon me?
How do you bring it through the?
Did we have to bring it to the fire commission?
No, it was discussed.
I know it was discussed, I was just bringing it for the council, for the committee.
Well, we don't have to approve a committee unless it's a city committee.
No, it's a.
We don't have to approve that.
Go ahead, Mr. Monday.
It's not a city committee, but Melanie Hutcheson and myself and Ms. Harris, we were, the Brewer family wanted us to be at the services and we talked about this after the services. And wanted to name the fire station in its pool because he was so interested in getting that fire station built and it was in our ward, voir fai. That was the reason we came up with the committee. And we asked the mayor, was it okay? And he said, y'all can have a committee, I mean, hey, and that's what we did.
So, what is the committee responsible for?
We going to have a celebration at the opening of the committee. He says it's going to be about August, maybe sometime in August. We're going to have a celebration and do a big celebration at the fire station.
A dedication.
A dedication, but, you know.
But I'm working on that resolution right now, I was trying to have it ready for this particular council meeting, but I had problems getting all of the information I need. but I had problems getting all of the information I needed to put on.
Your resolution is fine.
I know. That's, that's what's. That's what's not really approved. The, the building being named for this is the council approving that resolution. But you have a committee and not the only thing that's gonna get that name on that building is the council approving the resolution that's being written. The committee is beautiful. I'm glad we have one. But I just wanted to go by protocol. That's the only thing that's gonna actually get that name on that building. It's the approval from the council, that resolution.
Yes, uh, we told them where.
And then I'll get with you because if you have information that I need to put on the resolution, I most certainly will welcome it because I've been working hard. I've even talked to Chief Rose about getting information.
Ms. Harris, Ms. 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 Harris is, uh, the chairman of the committee. So she'll give you the information that, that you need to go.
I'll let you know, I'll let you know what I.
Is that all right, Ms. Harris?
That's fine.
If I need more, I'll get it from you, okay?
Yeah, just let me know.
Type it up and ready for the next council meeting.
Okay. Any more questions?
Yeah, one more question. Um, I think we brought this up like Councilperson Mohammed said. We brought this up before, we discussed it. And, uh, what, what I was concerned about is we don't have any critique or we don't have any, what makes one person more important than the other person? We don't have anything to critique anything. We can't, we can't, there's no evaluation to pick, to choose who gets names on.
But then you, then you choose President Trump.
What? What was that?
I said, then you choose Trump.
Didn't matter who I choose. I, I just, I'm just saying that, uh, that we don't have any way to critique any individual and say, here's why.
We're not trying to critique any individual. We're just trying to do something, it's making us, he wanted that fire station so bad. He don't appreciate Trump for so bad, he didn't get a chance to see it. That's the reason.
Do you, do you, do you have a problem with us naming it that or is that just a question from?
No, it's just a que, it's just a general question. Same general question I brought up before.
Okay, well.
Don't be biased.
I think the intelligent thing to do is go ahead and give the resolution together. And then bring it before council and be voted up or voted down because there are many, many people who could be named for, for doing many beautiful things. Right now, we're talking about, uh, Chief Brewer who has gone on, and this is something that not just the committee wants to be, but I believe the city as a whole, especially on that end of town. We'd love to see that station named for him.
No, but can, can I just say something real quick?
Just a general statement.
Can I say something real quick?
Yes.
Both sides got good ideas. I mean, that's committed to do the dedication. And then again, on this side, the ordinance, I mean, the resolution. And, and I think both sides, and I think we can move with that. I think it'll be all right. We can move with that. Still do that and do the resolution at the same time, be through it, you know, you know.
No, I'm not gonna say anything else because I, 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 I think you thought I was waving you off. I wasn't, I was not waving you off.
Okay.
I, I wasn't waving you off. And if I, I, I'll, I'll talk to you after, after the meeting.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Um, was there any other?
Yeah, the Fire Commission.
Okay. Ms. Mohammed, Fire Commission?
Huh? No.
Yes, sir, the Fire Commission.
Pat don't need to be there on this one.
Am I ready now? The Fire Commission martini's the June twenty-third. A few talking points. First of all, I, I would like to say that Mayor McClinton has named, uh, Assistant Chief Rose as interim chief until one is appointed. There are two firefighter EMT positions that are now available, two, three firefighter paramedic positions, and one single role paramedic position is open. We have seventy-two positions altogether. There are seven vacancies, six to two uniform members and three civilian secretaries. Five of the six single role paramedic positions have been filled. Our retirements, Lieutenant Anthony Miller retired April first, twenty twenty, with twenty-five years of service to the West Memphis Fire Department. And of course, on a Saturday, our Fire Chief Dennis Brewer passed away unexpectedly on May thirty-third of this year. And we're asking that you please can help his family, his friends in prayer. The PPE, which is the personal, uh, personal something equipment, paramedic.
Protective.
Protective, that's what I mean. Uh, uh, PPE, which is personal protective equipment, has been issued for twenty twenty. Twelve sets of the following has been issued, coats, pants, gloves and hoods. This is year two of our five-year agreement for the PPE, uh, equipment. Vehicle maintenance, scheduling the reconstruction review for July thirteenth through the fifteenth, twenty twenty, for the new Pierce fire truck. Uh, we'll do this with Pierce manufacturing to ensure accuracy of our purchase. This could be delayed because of the COVID nineteen. And also, I believe, three ambulances were purchased, purchased for two hundred thousand dollars in Alderman City Clerk, I'm sorry. Uh, Alderman Pat and the mayor, they've discussed all of that and I think things are untitled. We had a really good meeting. It was basically a reconnecting meeting because we had my missus March tenth. So there was a lot to talk about, but I'm just trying to narrow it down. And, uh, City Clerk, I will get you the, the, uh, information as soon as I get it all typed up. Training has resumed. The Arkansas Fire Academy has resumed training. Our personnel will begin training on July fifth, twenty twenty, which is this weekend. And we have several personnel needing basic courses, uh, that have to be delayed because of the COVID nineteen, so they'll have to go back and kind of get a reference course because the COVID has really hindered so many things. Uh, the command staff personnel are closely monitoring the COVID nineteen situation. Of course, Chief Brewer and Chief Rose and Chief Clay, they were assigned by the mayor. I don't know if he's assigned anyone else or not on that task force. And if so, I'm sure you'll get that information to us whenever, uh, it is ready. The budget, trial balance ending on four thirty twenty, twenty is twenty-one percent. Twenty, twenty-one point twenty-five percent for supplies and services. Salaries and benefits, uh, will have to be adjusted to account for six of the single role paramedic positions. And I think Chief Rose and the Fire Department staff, they were estimating the cost to be about four hundred and five thousand, six hundred sixty dollars and forty-eight cents. And also, the, the Fire Commission did approve that fire station on the east end of town. We've already approved that. The Fire Commission has approved it and we are gonna refer it to the Bureau Council body once the resolution has been, uh, written and hopefully passed. Also, the, the Fire Commission gave, gave Commissioner, gave, uh, Counselor Pat the authority to go ahead and do a separate line item for the EMS because of all the runs and everything that they're having to make due to the COVID nineteen. So there's gonna be a separate line item so we can get a real accurate account of what's going on. And also today, we did pass a resolution. We did pass that resolution to approve the EMS billing fees for the West Memphis Fire Department. And I believe that will end my report.
Were there any questions to Ms. Mohammed? Are there any other meeting, uh, commission meetings I overlooked? We're gonna go down to, uh, citizen requests. We have one citizen request, uh, Mr. Renee Sims.
Hello, guys. I'm putting this on Facebook so that all the citizens can see it as well.
We normally give, uh, five minutes and give your name and your, come to the mic, come to the mic and give your name and address.
Sorry about that. Okay, my name is Jermaine Sims. I'm a, uh, Academies of West Memphis graduate, actually. Uh, I attended Arkansas State University and I'm still a student there. As a student of color, I'm honestly, uh, struggling a little bit through college, but I've actually learned a lot, beginning with a thing called persistence. Uh, and I want to begin with persistence because, um, as I've presented my ideas to, uh, multiple people across the council, um, uh, on other projects throughout the city, uh, even family members and friends, everybody's like, oh, they're already trying to do that. Uh, maybe you should speak with this person, maybe you should speak with that person. But what I'm saying is that I'm offering persistence and dedication and hard work, which is why, which is why I wore my boots today because I'm a hard worker. And so actually, after this, I'm gonna go to work, uh, and work on some houses. And so, um, if you all have your devices and they're available, um, could you pull up your browsers and type in somedaysems.com? Uh, uh, and once you get there, you'll, uh, click on the little, uh, tab in the right-hand corner and go to the Best of the West. And right there, you can follow along with me, uh, if you have any questions or if you are not understanding what I'm saying. Uh, so what my project is and what I'm asking you guys for is for a grant to help me, uh, to help me start to build up the revenue and the real estate in West Memphis, Arkansas. Uh, as a student in Jonesboro, Arkansas, I've watched citizens, uh, constantly pour into that city, build up new things. They have banks and hotels and stores, places for people to shop. They have multiple gyms and multiple churches. West Memphis does not have that. Uh, on the West Memphis map, I've noticed that we have a lot of vacant areas, areas that not have, uh, even been developed on. Once you go down the east side of Broadway, you have no businesses. You just have churches and laundromats. Uh, we have to give the people something to do. Murderers have stopped because people have been in houses, uh, communicating, socializing, being friends, uh, playing Uno games. It's been on Facebook. I'm here to tell you that because, uh, these are some things that you cannot see. Um, also, uh, so with that being said, I want to, uh, my, so my first personal build will be, uh, a tiny house community, uh, which, uh, which will also, uh, be in place of some of the trailer parks. Because we have about three to four trailer parks in West Memphis. I know there are two on the east side of town. And, uh, most of them have empty lots and are rundown. And so what we can do, uh, to build that up, uh, and to, uh, kind of help out code enforcement is, uh, to bring in new real estate, uh, which is what my team is doing. I actually do have a team of ten individuals who also graduated from West Memphis, uh, the Academies of West Memphis. We are putting our money together, uh, I'm actually gonna take out a personal loan. We're putting out, putting our money together, uh, to buy, uh, to buy some land and to start those tiny homes. But what I need your help with is, uh, our first big community build, which is gonna be, uh, a recreational center, somewhere for our people to go, uh, somewhere for people to also grow. Uh, my point here is that I want the city to grow before someone else comes in and gentrifies it. Um, gentrification again is going into tiny neighborhoods, buying up the houses and real estates, uh, and charging people like five hundred a month for a one-bedroom, and you know, you taking that money, but you're not giving it back to the community. And so what I want to do is, uh, for you guys to help me build a recreational center. You guys get twenty percent a year. And that twenty percent goes to any funding that you guys need, uh, throughout the city. Uh, and then the other eighty percent goes to the employees. It'd be employee-owned, uh, like, like Papa John, Johns is. And so that means a hundred percent of the profit is going right back into the community. And so, uh, just, just to get it started, uh, the grand total is about a hundred fifty thousand dollars. I have not, uh, found, uh, a property yet to, to start that build. But also, um, on the east side of Broadway, we have a lot of, uh, like empty, used to be manufacturing places. And I was thinking if we just, uh, put it right on Broadway, uh, to build it up. The name of it, of course, would be, uh, Personalities, uh, you know, and to be a little trendy, the children would call it the P. Uh, there you'll have a swimming pool, uh, so the people can learn how to swim. Uh, the, the population in West Memphis is mainly black people, people of color. Not to be political, but Black Lives Matter movement, it actually matters. We need to learn how to swim. I know how to swim. I was a lifeguard, uh, for an entire summer, uh, teaching children how to swim. Um, we also, uh, in that building, we also would promote mental health and have computers where we're working on mental health exercises, which will also bring the crying weight right down because people aren't bored just thinking of other things to do. Uh, they're somewhere where like they're working on their mind and they're also their brain. Any questions?
Uh, I would like, I would like to say, uh, first of all, we have, uh, planning and community development director that's behind you. I'm sure you can get with Paul and possibly, you know, I love the small house idea. I, I love your energy first.
Thank you.
But, uh, I love to see young people being involved. But the tiny house idea is something we have talked about. But if you got a plan, that's definitely something you'd like to explore. You know, I, I, I can't say I can give you a hundred fifty dollar house. I can't do that, but I'm definitely interested in, in where you're going. I think this council, we would love to hear more of your ideas and, and what you're trying to do for, move for.
Let me ask you one quick question. Have you been up to Wilson, Arkansas?
Wilson, Arkansas?
Yeah, just right up the highway. Go up there and just take a look. They have a tiny house, a little village up there.
Okay, and check it out?
Yeah, it's real.
Yeah, I've actually been, doing a lot of research and, uh, it's only, uh, like a thousand dollars to get one shipping container. Uh, and so like the bill wouldn't be, like, would be more efficient and it will be, uh, towards more green energy. Speaking of the green energy, uh, company, which is brought to West Memphis. Any other questions?
You got some great ideas.
Uh, and again, that website is somedaysems.com, uh, slash best dash of dash the dash west. And, uh, just to explain the best of the west, I mean, the best of the west because I want to make West Memphis the best. Uh, uh, producing youth that becomes the best. Uh, uh, the whole, the whole project here is based on community and, uh, building the city up, uh, more persistently and more vastly. I also saw that we have a twenty forty project going on, uh, that ends by twenty forty. But I think that, uh, we could give it five years and, uh, you know, bring in some great revenue and look better than Jonesboro. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anything else you could?
I would like to say about the fourth of July, I would like to make a quick announcement. Does someone have their hand up? There are a lot of complaints about people, uh, copying fireworks past the hour that's been designated by ordinance. And of course, we do have an ordinance that restricts the use of it. We allow, but restrict. I don't, I don't have it in front of me right now, but you can have this call seat and find out what, what it says, the number of days, the time. I know it's through the weekdays, night, I believe it's ten o'clock. And I'm late after July, so I believe it's until midnight. But if you're gonna pop those fireworks out in the middle of your street, we're asking that you please clean up behind yourself and don't leave all of that debris out there and be mindful of the neighbors, elderly neighbors, people that are going to work the next day. What you're enjoying, everybody else may not be enjoying, so just try to get a balance between that if you toss your hand. Now, you know, the fireworks, now they're not firecrackers anymore, they're bombs. And that's what they sound like. They sound like big bombs that are going off. And we're asking that you please be mindful of your, your neighbors,